Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting approximately 30 to 40 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to four questions, but that will depend upon the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during the exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or something they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. So, we're gonna get started. Today, we're speaking with Alan Costello, one of the four candidates for Select Board in the Plymouth Town election. Alan, thank you so much for joining us today.
Julie, thank you for having me. I really thank PAC TV for inviting me to this forum. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, we're gonna get right into this for the questions.
Sure.
I have a little preamble. The behavior of some members of the Select Board have come under scrutiny over the past few years. Many debates on multiple topics have taken place over social media and in venues that are not of an official nature. In 2013, a procedure was established by the town governing the use of official town social media accounts, as well as guiding principles of conduct and decorum for all town employees, board and committee members, town meeting members, and any others involved with the town's governance. Do you believe that these policies and procedures need an update for 2022? And what would you base that on? And what would you recommend for guidelines and standards in regard to communicating in general and specifically via social media or other non-sanctioned platforms?
It's a good question, Julie. There's no doubt about it that the most effective way to get your message out now, when you're running for any type of office in town, is social media. But social media is still a little bit like the wild, wild west. And it's a double-edged sword, where you can use it to get your messages out to constituents, and the vast majority of the time, that's how it's used, and it's used effectively. It scares me. I'm not social media savvy, and if you wander onto social media and you don't know exactly what you're talking about, you really could be in for a tough afternoon. People are sharp. People are smart, and people are paying attention. Like no other medium, social media is the way people are now communicating to their elected officials. There's been some dust-ups, there's no doubt about it, over the last couple of years. Some of it is a little bit a cause for concern, because it goes too far. Some of it sort of goes away in a day or two, and it's good when that happens.
So, just to follow up on that, yes, social media is used a lot. And it really, it's not a sanctioned, unless it's the town's social media page. It's not supposed to be a sanctioned way to communicate.
Right.
But, that begs the question, what is the best way for boards, committees, the town itself, to communicate to the public on a regular basis what's going on? Because frankly, a lot of people don't have time to watch all the boards and committee meetings, and we don't have a lot of reporting from newspapers anymore, which used to kind of fill in that gap. So...
No, you're right. It is the way that most people get their information. I, when I was with the Committee of Precinct Chairs, the chairman, I had always wanted to, and others did as well, to have a dedicated Facebook page, just for the Committee of Precinct Chairs. And I would suggest that you could probably do that with all the major committees. Have their own individual Facebook pages that they maintained, or their clerk maintained, their chairman, assistant chairman, vice chairman. That seems to be the best way, I would think, in the future to get information out. I know the town has a website, and it's a very good website. It's sometimes difficult to navigate, and once you figure out a few places you want to go, the information is there, but you have to spend some time and look for it.
Looking for it, yeah, right.
A Facebook page, as you know, you're sitting in the doctor's office, waiting room, you're on the Facebook page. You're driving in traffic, you're sitting on the couch in the evening. It's so accessible that, like you said, the newspaper is sort of gone by the wayside. It's unfortunate, but it really has. Our local paper does a good job, but you can tell the content is secondary. It's a little fluff.
It's not hyper-local.
It's not local news. And if you're into it, like I am, I'm a junkie for town politics and news, and I do spend a little bit of time watching the meetings. The other feature, and don't sell yourself short, is the YouTube rebroadcast of your meetings.
Oh sure, I mean, you could always watch them.
So, once you learn that, and you learn to navigate that, that's very handy.
Yep.
You don't have to watch it on the same schedule. Monday nights, if you're busy, or working, or dinner, late dinner, the kids are at a ballgame, or whatever, you can watch it any day of the week. And I use it all the time to go back several weeks, if I've missed some, the beginning of a certain topic.
Right.
Very handy.
Back to your thing about maybe every department has its own Facebook page, or maybe its own communication page on the website, or something like that. But should that be regulated by a policy or procedure? So that all departments are using the same policies?
Without a doubt. It has to be standardized. It has to have someone, and I think we have a growing IT department, and they probably have standards and best practices within that industry that they can impose on it. And it should be there, because, as you know better than I, the climate right now at local government, state government, federal government, can get crazy very quickly. And it doesn't take much for someone to get out of hand, and actually make people nervous and be dangerous. So, there has to be a mechanism that you weed, and everyone's welcome, and we invite everyone, but if you're gonna go on there and cause a lot of commotion, and you make people nervous, then, you know, there has to be a mechanism to remove you.
And maybe if there was a place to go for facts, for actual facts, from the people that have actually made the statements, or made the policies, or the committees, that this is what actually happened in our meetings, if that's where they start, that's probably a more realistic way to look at it.
That would solve a lot of problems right off the rail, because people are getting the information, the accurate information, right away.
Yep, right.
And you don't let all of those rumors fester, and everyone has a little different idea, and that's when the spiral's out of control very quickly, when people start interjecting things, and they're not sure what happened, but all of it, so you know.
Well, that's true everywhere. Do you think board members are treated fairly?
I think overall, they are. I think there's a couple of outliers. Somebody might speak to a board member inappropriately. I mean, the vast majority, quite honestly, even the Select Board, everyone's sort of a volunteer. There's no one making any money at this. So, it's really tough to see someone get raked over the calls, or insulted, or their family insulted, when they're... Anyone I've ever run into down at town government is trying to do the best for the town. I don't always agree with them. They might have a different idea, a different way of doing it. So, to really beat them up and harass them is way out of line. You can disagree with them, and that's really what it's all about. You can disagree, pose another idea, but when you start getting personal and mean, you know, but that's the climate out there. I mean, just a quick story, when I gathered my signatures for this position in the last couple of weeks, and I have done this before, I did it in 2021, but during the pandemic, it was a little bit different. You didn't have the face-to-face contact.
Right.
But, when I first started gathering the signatures and talking to people just on the street, there's a little air of viciousness from the constituency. Some people are up in arms, some people are disappointed, some people are mad, so I think when they lead with that, everything goes south very quickly, versus trying to work on a solution.
Right. Okay. Question number two. On April 5th, Select Board Chair Richard Quintle penned a letter outlining the events that led up to the Select Board's March 29th, 3-2 approval vote on supporting an RFP, a Request for Proposal, from Boston South Real Estate and Development LLC, to begin their due diligence in determining the best use of the Plymouth County woodlot. He stipulates that, quote, "Since this is just the beginning of a long public process, that the Select Board does not specifically endorse any specific use of the woodlot at this time," end quote. Now, many residents have mixed feelings about this statement, as the presentation by Boston South clearly outlined a thoroughbred racetrack as one of the components of development on that land. How do you feel that this entire process has been handled so far? And what are your feelings on the proposed usage of that land?
Well, I've sort of been following right from the beginning. I happen to be watching the selectman's meeting. And number one, I think it's the job and the responsibility of the Select Board to hear such proposals. And I think in that realm, they were well within their scope, to have the group come in, talk about the proposal, and the pending proposal that was on the, the only one that was on the board explained that night, was the only one, was this racetrack venue.
Right.
I think what happened next is really where the problems started to arise, and I'm not privy to all of the information, but I don't see why a vote had to be taken that night. And I'm in the construction business, and I get RFPs, Request for Proposals, weekly. And I've been doing it a long time. I can look at an RFP and have a ballpark number in my head, which I think this job might cost. But, I'd be foolish to send that number on to the client without reading the RFP. There could be something in there that's new this week, or new to the job. So, I think where a few of the Select Board members said they didn't have the information, they hadn't read the information. This is a pretty extensive project, a pretty major project for the fabric of Plymouth, right in the heart of Exit 5, where there's a lot going on anyway. I think the vote can easily be misconstrued by the development group going forward. They're gonna go on to the next, in my opinion, in my opinion, I don't know this for sure, but they're gonna go on to the next phases of licensing and, excuse me, permitting, and they have in their back pocket a positive approval from the Board of Selectmen. They don't have to elaborate that it's missing the term thoroughbred racing. I think it was a mistake for the Select Board to send them off with an approval of any kind, with such little information. And I've told many people about that. That's been my position. The position overall of a racetrack in that area of town, or any area of town, quite honestly, I think is wrong. It's not the right project for Plymouth. It's not the right project for that area. There's too much going on there, there's more residential coming online. That's gonna be an impossible interchange and stretch a road to transit here shortly. And to add a racetrack is not a good idea, in my opinion.
Okay. Now, that land is not owned by the town of Plymouth. That land is owned by the county.
County, exactly right.
So, I don't know if everyone is privy to what exactly is the procedure that happens between the county who put out the RFP, it wasn't Plymouth that put it out, and then the amount of time that they actually gave the Select Board, or anybody, to look at it. So, that's kind of an unknown. And as an outsider looking in, what I think was just surprising was there was such a short amount of time where the word "racetrack" was mentioned. Had, you know, months ago, the county said, "We've gotten four or five different proposals for this land. This is one of them, there's a couple for housing, there's a couple for something else." It might not have been so shocking, maybe, and that's not, I don't mean that word...
I think that's a good word. I think that's what happened.
Well, it was just like, whoa, a racetrack, because it's just something that nobody ever thought of. So, going forward, if you were on the board, how would have you handled anything differently?
Well, I would have hoped that I would have stuck to the same sentiment that Selectman Flaherty brought up, that, you know, he can't make an educated decision with no information. So, I would have sent them back, and I would have reset the clock and asked for a ton of information, because you're asking, that's a big ask, to put a racetrack and maybe a resort-style hotel, and a minor league baseball field, all nice things in the right place, but to come in there in one meeting, half an hour presentation, and then get a vote out of it, it wasn't done correctly. It should have been, the front end of it should have been public input, just like you. I heard about the racetrack as a rumor around town, maybe tops, three, four days before the meeting, and I didn't put a lot of stock in it, because I hadn't seen anything, you know, and it was just a rumor that popped out of nowhere. And if I were on the board, I would ask whether it's the planning department, or whoever's hears these things first, or gets wind of them first. Something like this has to be done over several meetings. People, stakeholders have to be brought in, the resident has to be brought in, much quicker. I mean, that was part of the frustration, I think, that night, was that everyone was surprised, everyone was shocked, to use your word. And some people reacted, and I think rightfully so, the way they did. I think the other problem that we have is, like you suggested at the beginning, it's the county's land, and the county has certain things. They're not limited, like you would be if it were you and I trying to put a project there. And I had that, I ran into that in that very area, that communications tower that's there. I'm in the communications tower business, and I tried to get a tower about 100 yards away during the same period of time turned down by the town. The county went and put that tower up, didn't even have to get permission from the town. So, they have some avenues, they don't have to go through the same process.
And maybe it would be a good thing for the town to really educate the residents of Plymouth, what are the rules and regulations regarding land that is owned by the county? And when do you get handcuffed that there's not much you can do? And it's just being, you know, putting it all out there, saying, "This is what happens, this is the process, and we're gonna follow the process."
It would go a long way, I think, to crawl this, because it's not, in all fairness, it's not this Select Board's problem.
Correct.
But they've now made it their problem to some degree, but they could have handed that whole thing back, right back to the county, and then everyone's questions and anger and concerns would go to the county level, which, you know, the Select Board could still help out. But now, they're sort of backpedaling, because they're in it, they're in the mix, and they don't, in my opinion, and maybe I'm wrong, they don't have a lot of say at this point what's really gonna happen.
Right.
Now, they might have a couple of outs with zoning, but they have to hope that all goes through for them, because...
And wasn't it suggested that there's gonna be a non-binding question on the ballot that just asks, I think it asks the public something to the effect of, "Would you support a thoroughbred racetrack in your community?", something to that effect? So, they can just get the measure of what people think, one way or another.
I think the non-binding question is huge, and I hope it's not too late. The process might be too far ahead, but I think when you put it out, and it should be put out to the resident, to see really what the feeling is.
Yeah, what's the temperature? Just to push back a little bit on that, I believe this is a two-to-three-year process, just to vet all of this information. From what I gather, there's not gonna be anything actually constructed for a very long time.
That's what I have heard, and I hope that's true.
That's the due diligence that I think Dick Quintle was talking about, was that...
And he would know. I mean, they've talked to the people, so I'll take him at his word, and hopefully that's the case, so that over that period of time, all these problems, all these concerns get worked out.
All the questions get worked out.
And if it can go forward, and all the right provisions are put in...
And the people want it, that's right.
Then put it in.
So be it.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, no doubt about it.
Question three. Taxes, a single tax rate for personal and commercial use, commercial development, apartment and condominium development, the work of the Plymouth Area Economic Development Foundation. All of these issues are tied together, but have varied departments and boards and committees working on different aspects of them. This doesn't seem to be an efficient method of doing business. Is there a way to combine these silos of effort into a collaborative, project-based working group that hones in on a specific project? Do you believe that combining the efforts of many departments, boards, and committees with a singular goal and objective would be a far better use of time and resources, and ultimately, a more efficient way to create positive outcomes? And if so, give an example of what, an initiative that that might work on?
Well, I think the concept is the right idea. Get all the people in the room that make all these decisions. You eliminate all the back-and-forth, all of the wasted time, all the return trips to different meetings. It's imperative you do it. Now, I was in this room two years ago, three years ago, and my speech had exactly that commercial tax base is just, we're in dire need of to build that up. It's 10% last, whoever you talk to, it's 10, 12, maybe 14%, but it's terribly low.
It's not enough.
It's not enough. Economic development, I could have used my speech of three years ago, it's the same topics. Now, I know people in all of those different departments are working hard and trying to make things happen. It just hasn't popped yet. So, I give you good credit, that's a great idea, to bring all of the forces together, get them all in the same room, and as an example of that, the town just went through voter redistricting, much smaller by comparison.
Right.
But, what they decided to do is put a working group together, put 15 people in a room, and we stayed in the room for eight hours, came back a second time for eight hours, and hammered it out.
Yeah.
And I'm not so sure you can jack up the commercial rate in the 16-hour period, but the concept is right. You put the people that are in there, all in the same room, making the decision, and someone will brainstorm something, and you work off the person next to you, he has an idea, she has an idea.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, you know, it's not strung out by years, because of meetings and agendas, and the boards change, and people's personalities. You get the people in there right now, all of those people you mentioned, economic development people, they know what they're doing, and I mean, I'm sure that's what they do for a living, but I think that's a great idea.
And every board and committee knows what they're doing, and bless them all, they're all volunteers, basically, that are doing this work, and they get to be, they know, they're well-versed in what they're supposed to do.
In their lane, they do very well, no doubt about it.
Yeah, without a doubt. Now, when you mentioned the tax rate, when this was brought up a year and a half or two years ago to the Select Board, and there was a very passionate speech given about how it would really hurt the mom-and-pop businesses if they had to pay the same, a corporate tax rate, as the same as a big-box store. Why can't there be a residential tax rate, a mom-and-pop tax rate, and then an other commercial tax rate? Why couldn't something like that happen?
Technically and legally, I don't know why they couldn't be. That's a great idea. I've never even heard of a third, when I heard it was always, or I've had people talk to me about a split tax rate.
Right.
Business, residential.
Right.
And we have to do something, because residential, from what town meeting just said, is 80, 85% of the budget. And there's people out there that aren't gonna be able to go much further.
Right.
So, the commercial tax rate, either we have to bring in businesses and jack that up, if you wanna keep it a single rate, or you have to be creative, like you suggest. And maybe you split the commercial rate, so that you don't impact seasonal businesses, mom-and-pop businesses, but you have a national chain that is, you know, probably big enough to weather the storm, and probably doing well. You know, maybe you hit them a little bit harder, and fairly, of course, but, you know, they have to pay their fair share.
Yeah, you'd have to have, you know...
Steps.
Clearly, yeah, different steps on what we qualify as.
But that's a great idea.
I don't even know if it's legal, I'm just...
I'm not sure it is either, but I've never heard it, but it's worth looking into.
Right.
I mean, at this stage, everything should be explored, you know?
Exactly, everything should be on the table, right? Okay. Question four. Let's talk about Plymouth's current form of government. Now, what do you believe are its current strengths? What are its drawbacks? And do you think it's sustainable, given all the changes that are facing this town in the coming years?
Well, in the interest of full disclosure, I was involved with the group that pushed pretty hard to get the Charter question, Charter Commission question on the ballot.
Yep.
I think it's long overdue that Plymouth explore the other possible forms of government. That being said, I love, and I've said this on many occasions to many groups, people ask me, because it does appear to be a conflict. Here I am, trying to be in the town government, but I'm advocating to explore other forms of government. But presently, while we have the representative town meeting, I love it, I wanna work within it. They let me go down and debate and vote on some big-ticket items, some big projects, and I enjoy it, I enjoy the responsibility. But as a business owner, and, you know, a family, I also have different ideas on the way this government works, and it's, I think we've outgrown it. You know, a community of 60, per the census, I think, was 63,000 people, say 65,000 people. A budget we just passed last, two weeks ago, was $260 million, $270 million. It's not the right government for that, for those parameters. And the reason it doesn't work on occasion is we, as a town, because we only meet twice a year, and I know there's an option to meet more often, if you put all the signatures together and you get the permissions, but the fact of the matter is, we meet twice a year, and we're making huge decisions. And then if something happens in the interim, between those two six-month meetings, we end up either missing out on an opportunity, or we end up paying an exorbitant amount of money, because we haven't reacted quickly. And the biggest example, and I use it all the time, there's several of them, but the biggest one is the library, the local library on South Street. When that first came to town meeting, it needed a roof, it needed a roof replacement. The project cost was nine, a little over $900,000. Town meeting okayed it, gave the $900,000 to the town, "Go fix the roof." Everyone sort of forgot about it, myself included. Well, the next town meeting, the next spring, it comes back, fixes the library roof. How can that be? We just fixed the library roof last year. Well, it didn't get done. And now, in order to get it done, the cost is $2.1 million. So, everyone was very surprised, and shocked, and upset, but yet we voted for it again. Go, take the $2.1 million, go fix the roof. Now, totally forgetting about it. And I'm not making this up, but the third year goes by, and the library roof is on as an article. Now, it's $3.2 million to fix the roof.
So, what happened to the $900,000 and the $2.1?
Well, because of the delays in getting the bid out, and the cost, and rise in construction costs. So, because we waited three years to keep on putting this out to bid, the price elevated almost all three times. So, the resident and taxpayer has a new library roof today, the work got done, but they paid three times what they should have. And those things are happening over and over, sometimes in a smaller scale, but it's happening. And that's the problem with the present form of government, it's just not responsive enough to deal with that issue. And it's a shame.
It's really fiscal.
It's fiscal more than anything, I would say.
Whether anything else is fiscal.
From my point of view, there's some things that, bylaws and pieces of property that we might miss, but I think usually, we catch those in time.
Okay. So, you said you enjoy actually being part of town meetings.
I thoroughly enjoy it.
So, the premise of being able to actually participate in your own town's governance is good?
Oh, and I think that's why we've maintained, as long as we have. It's a great feeling, and if you're into it, and you wanna give back to the town, and you wanna help out, and if you're knowledgeable, and you wanna read about some dry stuff, about water wells and things like that, it's a great form of government.
Right.
And I would recommend it to anyone.
Yeah. One thing that I'd love you to comment on is, I know at town meeting, there's this really big, thick book that all the town meeting members get, that kind of explain all the articles that they're going to vote on. And I know we do some videos for some of these, we record some of the presentations, and it's amazing the amount of information that those town meeting members need to understand, comprehend, and have time to actually really digest what they're voting on. Do you think, how do you think that could be approved, so that as they go along through the year, they're getting more of this information? Or do they already?
I think the town has done a fairly good job of getting things on the webpage as quick as they can, as they become available. And not to correct you, but we get about six of those books. There is one thick one, but there's many that are about half the size. And some of them are very dry, read, and their budgets and their numbers, and it takes a lot of time to read them and go through them properly, and ask questions, educated questions. And you get them, I think the bylaw is, you only get it 14, or don't hold it there, maybe 21 days before the town meeting. So, it's an awful lot to digest, in a short amount of time, especially if you're just opening the packet 21 days before. But if you're watching some meetings, stuff gets, the advisory of finance does a really good job, the gentleman that runs that, Mr. Canty, he starts early, they go over the articles, all the members of that board break up into groups... all the members of that board break up into groups. And I think as a, as a committee, they do a good job covering the articles. I think there's a fiscal component that could be improved on, but I think day in and day out, they cover the articles pretty well. As do the selectmen. The selectmen put the wireman out, they talk about the articles, but it's really incumbent on you to watch the meetings because that's happening beforehand.
Exactly.
And unless you go to PAC TV, YouTube, you, you watch the old meetings, catch up.
But there's, but there's a lot of information.
Ton of information.
That's the point.
Ton of information.
Yeah.
And you know, not, not to, there's some people that don't open their envelope until the Saturday morning of town meeting and, and by that time it's too late because these are, these are expensive decisions you're making. So there's not many, but I mean, the vast majority of the people that I know and I see do their, do their work.
And now we have two more districts.
Three.
Three?
Yeah, we ended up with three.
Three more, three more districts, right. So there's.
So we've gone, we've gone to 18.
Yeah.
18 precincts.
Is there nine in each?
There'll be nine in each.
So there's 27 more people.
Be 27 additional people, exactly right.
Yeah.
For now. And that was part of that redistricting I talked about earlier. And that was a very good job by that group because you had to work within the state. We had put a plan together and the state came in and, and put their plan over us and it didn't fit.
Right.
So we had to go back in the room and, and do it again.
Yeah.
And to everyone's credit.
It was pretty amazing.
They got it done. And it was a nice job.
Well, that shows how teamwork.
Teamwork. And then there were residents that were impacted. They called in, we, we made provisions. There were very, very few cases of people that were dislocated or, or upset. I think we solved most everyone's problem.
Which is wonderful.
To that working group's credit and the town. The town had people on the board, the group as well. And that's an example, going back to your silo thing of combining silo. Everyone was pulling in the same direction and it, and it paid off.
Yeah, it's amazing how well sometimes that works. So we have about eight minutes left. So what would you like to talk about that we haven't talked about yet? Would you like to revisit anything or do you want to just?
Does that complete all of your questions?
That completes my questions, yes.
Okay. I guess the biggest thing I want to speak to is really why I'm running.
Okay.
It's sort of unorthodox. I, I joined the race for select board literally the 11th hour. There was only hours left when you could submit your name.
Okay.
And I did that because there were, for the longest time, two available positions when Mr. Flaherty announced he wasn't going to go for reelection. I think it was late February. And, and I understand that, you know, he has a young family and a business and so now two positions are now going to be on the May 21st ballot. And again, as a junkie of watching town politics, there were only two candidates. So I felt uncomfortable with that. You know, a town of Plymouth's caliper, its size, I would have thought there would have been a pool of candidates that wanted to go down and, and work for the town, work for the resident. And it wasn't happening. To his credit, Mr. Mahoney jumped in the last week and I jumped in a couple of days after him. So I think it presents a, well, it does, it presents four options for the resident. And they get to listen to all of us through, through this forum and get to make some decisions. And if they want some change, or they know some of the players already, they, there's one incumbent, they know ballpark, you know, how he's going to work for them. They know Mr. Mahoney certainly was a longtime selectman.
Yeah.
So they have some options. And I want, I thought it was important to give the resident options and my, my time allows me to do it. My place in life, I'm at, I'm not retired, but I'm coming to the end of my working career. I do a little bit for the fund and I have some ample time. So I wanted to throw my hat into the ring, see what happens. So.
What would be your?
That's what I did.
What would be your, the thing that you feel strong, strongest about that you would want to tackle immediately?
The first thing I want to do, and this is the second reason I decided to run, and it goes to your earlier observation, is that there's a growing feeling that the select board might have lost its way a little bit. And there's a faction of the board that I believe is heading in the wrong direction. So my hope would be, if, if elected, to go back down to town hall and be part of the board and bring back balance to the board and confidence. I mean, the select board's always been sort of a, an anchor around town. You don't always agree with them, but you shouldn't be questioning them as much as they have been the last six or eight months. And I know they have some difficult issues that have come across their desk. So I mean, it's, it's going to warrant some controversy because you have some big ticket issues. They're not, they're no longer talking about putting up a traffic light or a stop sign. These are big items that they're dealing with.
Right.
So that was the first thing. And that's no disrespect to anyone on the board, it's just that I, I think the board could, could use some change. And to that point, during town meeting, we talked about an article of, of taking the small stipend that the selectmen now receive away. Somebody brought that up as a, as an amendment to an article to take the $4,000 away. So that tells you that there were some people disgruntled.
Right.
Who would have thought that? For years, as long as I've been down there and for long as I've been watching town meeting, that's a, that's a housekeeping how to go.
Right.
You stamp it and you go ahead. This past town meeting, we talked about it for half an hour. And that's not the way it should be, it's not the way we should be doing it. So that's really an opportunity to get down and provide some balance. And then once down there, commercial tax base would be my, my biggest issue. And I know it's a daunting task as well. It's been 10, 12% to get it to where it needs to be. And some people say 30%, you know? I'm not going to sit here and tell you I'm going to bring it to 30%, but we've got to start getting it going 14, 15, 16, going in the right direction.
Right.
If the, if the resident is, or the average resident is going to be able to make it because it's getting more and more difficult to live here in town.
Yeah. And to your point, to bring commercial businesses here that don't necessarily draw more from the resources or the, the police, the fire, the schools, the water, the sewage, all that. Are there businesses that you can bring that can bring money in, can bring a tax base in, but don't really pull and drain on, on, on our government? That's one obviously very difficult thing to, to figure out. And the other thing to what you just said is, is being able to afford to work here and live here. I mean, you can, you can work here, but where do you live?
It's getting more and more difficult. I mean, I, I really would shudder to be a young family now and trying to move into Plymouth. I mean, it's, it's probably cost prohibitive.
Near us.
You're right. It's, it's not just Plymouth, though. I don't want to be unfair. It's, it's around, it's across the board, but whatever we can do to improve it, Plymouth is terrific and, and it, it's been good to me, my family. I have zero complaints. It's really been nice. And I'd like to make sure I do what I can to, to keep it like that and if I can, add to it. So that's really where I'm coming from.
Okay.
So I really appreciate it and I'd like to remind everybody if I have a minute, if I have a minute left.
You absolutely do, you have two minutes.
Oh, two minutes, okay.